Others wounded out in Newtown, Connecticut. We even pray for the family of the perpetrator. That they will be able to adjust to an experience that will be with them for a lifetime. We pray for our community, our city, and all those whom we represent. We pray for our families and all families for some measure of forgiveness and acceptance for the trespasses against us. We also pray for love and togetherness during the Christmas and the holiday season. And may we be thankful for all the goodness and mercy shown to us by our heavenly Father. Bless our nation during times of unleashed violence and mayhem that produced carnage that has delivered a wake-up call for all of us. We pray for all nations. This we ask in the precious name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This time we're going to ask our hard-working clerk, and boy, is she working hard these days. Here.
Mayor King.
Here.
Mayor President Allen.
Here.
Councilmember.
Here.
Councilmember Goodman.
Here.
2010 Rock.
Huh?
Didn't 2010.
Okay.
Councilmember Goodman.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Ray.
Here.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll roll here. Next, our minutes. Work session, the regular meeting on Monday, October 5th. Move to a dot. We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any corrections, additions, or comments? Hear none, all in favor of the motion, ladies and gentlemen, we're saying aye.
Aye.
Close saying. Minutes are approved. Comment period. Public comment period. Time set aside for anyone who would like to take up three minutes to address us on the subject of your shoot. Yes, ma'am. Would you please give us your name and mail and address? I know who you are, but...
Good evening.
Evening.
I just wanted to thank you for following through with the master plan and working on that beautiful street outside. My husband was on the board when the master plan was approved and all the public hearings that were taking place, everybody was all in favor of it, and a lot of them gave comments that were built into the plan, and I want us to continue doing that, I hope. It looks great out there, and thank you. I was at the base today, Scott was, and the mayor for the base received an award, and you'll be reading about it in the paper, it's a national award, and it had to do with small businesses. But one thing that caught my ear was that they were talking about they'd just redone the runway out there, and the center part of the runway has not been done since the base was reopened in the 50s. So the word "infrastructure" was used out there today, and that's what we're hearing here. And I think from what Roy Parker had said in the paper, his water now is much better because of the infrastructure that was redone here. The Paramount years ago burned down because they couldn't get water to the Paramount to put the fire out, adequate water supply. And it would be a shame for the Paramount or any of the other businesses down the street for that to happen again, and us not be able to get the water to it. So I really hope you will consider doing that. And I just have a few statistics here I would like to give you that towns around here and in North Carolina similar to our size, Salisbury, the development director there, they finished their streetscape and redoing their revitalization downtown. Since our 2001 master plan was adopted and we began addressing streetscape needs, we have seen over $60 million in investment. Raleigh, and I realize Raleigh's a lot larger than we are, but they have experienced, in one block mainly, or the main street was redone, $10 million investment, and they've already produced $3 billion in investment in just six years. And it's open now, they have social options for young professionals and empty nesters who like to come downtown and walk around, and they love to do it. Franklin, Virginia, who is population of 8,800, they spent $21 million on their streetscape, it netted 101 businesses, 453 jobs. When all this started, they had a 43 percent vacancy rate on their street. Three years later, it was 3 percent. Frankfort, Indiana, 16,000 population, spent $18 million on their streetscape, 33 new jobs, um, new businesses, 185 new jobs. Their vacancy rate was 11 percent, and it is now down to 1.55 percent. And I just want to encourage you to consider to continue this program, I mean, this project on down the streets, because it's a lot for Wayne County. If we lose our downtown, we've lost our county. Downtown is the center of Goldsboro, and it's the center of the county. And Mr. Goodman, I think you said, I think it was in the paper that you had said something about you wanted to let your people know what's going on in your district. Just remind them that downtown is in your district, and we need to remind them about that because there is a lot going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more speakers? Anyone else? Yes? I recognize him. Look at everyone who wants to speak. We will get everyone, I promise you.
I'm here and brought to the streetscape. I am a business owner and property owner. It's so important that you approve this remaining streetscape because downtown is the core of the city. Not only will it impact business owners, it will impact citizens in a positive way, especially our youth. The repairing of downtown will give us all a new energy. Young citizens will get the opportunity to see up-close commerce, people conducting business, strangers interacting with one another, storefronts no longer empty, a variety of downtown businesses. Investment downtown, can't you see it? As a result, it can impact District 3 in a positive way, creating jobs for citizens in District 3 and allowing the youth to see business being conducted, giving all citizens a sense of pride for downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. I think I saw Ms. Rowe.
Good evening, everyone. I had to write my little stuff down so I wouldn't forget nothing. I'm different from everybody else, and that's what the Lord would have you to be, a one person. I wrote, I wanted to make a plea up here about downtown Center Street. I want to know who you're trying to please, the merchants, because you're not pleasing the taxpayers. And last time I was up here, two weeks ago, Mr. Broadway said that he had spoke to some people that they were in favor of, and that people don't live in the city of Goldsboro. And I got down here too. You be careful how you vote, because I've been around here a long time, and I, yes, I am a politician. And if you don't do what's right for the citizens of Goldsboro and the taxpayers, then you just look to go somewhere that somebody else will be sitting there. Because I do intend to try to get somebody to run. Already got two people that's gonna run. You gotta think of the taxpayers and not your own personal agenda. I like Goldsboro, and I'll do anything to help Goldsboro. But I'm not gonna see this money throw down here, you start at this point down here, and then they, you had to add more money, because they went into some problems that they weren't aware of. So you got to be careful of what you're doing, because I really think that personal issues, like I said, I'm gonna be looking at this vote and how you do, but you need to start thinking about taxpayers. Down here, you ain't even got a decent restaurant in this side here of Goldsboro. Instead of trying to get somebody else down here and not all down Goldsboro, you trying to please the merchants, oh, you trying to please? I have to go down to Ice Town to get me a hot dog, because ain't even no decent restaurants in this area. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. I think I mentioned, we'll get everybody.
Good evening, gentlemen. How are y'all doing? My name is Ernest Mansour. I'm a downtown property owner, a commercial real estate developer, a general contractor, a professional engineer. And the engineer wants to talk to y'all about my first point, that being the water lines. When you have water lines that are about this big, eight, 10, 12 inches, and over the past 100 years, those water lines have corroded and filled in, and it's only one and two inches, it's a very bad hazard for fire. Our buildings downtown are old and historic, and if they burn down, they're irreplaceable. We will never have them again. Also, if you walk Center Street, there's cracks in Center Street wide enough, if you turn your foot sideways, you can step all the way through the pavement. It's definitely in need of repair. Also, along Center Street, you're not able to have any handicap parking because the slope of the road is too steep. It has cost me and other property owners literally thousands of dollars having to build handicap ramps and things in the back of our building because there's no handicap parking on Center Street. It can't be done. I even tried to pay for it, but with the roads and the condition that they're in, it's impossible without major work. Also, I'm on the downtown development board and on the economic restructuring committee. Since this project began, we've had more applications for the downtown business incentive grant in the past few months than we've had in the past two years combined. There's a lot of interest, we have a lot of new businesses downtown, and I'd like to endorse this project wholeheartedly. And the quicker you can get it done, the better downtown will be, and the faster the renovations and the resurrection of downtown will go. Thank you.
Mr. Mansour.
Yes, sir.
I heard you mention something about the quality of the water. I think Mr. Parker also mentioned something about the quality of the water. His employees would not even drink it before he did the first block. Now he says that this water quality has improved tremendously. I want to ask you a question. If that be true, would not this discoloration and this poor quality of water affect all the restaurants up here?
To a degree it has. It's really not a discoloration or poor water quality as much as it is inadequate flow to fight a fire. If we were to have a major fire and they hook up to the fire hydrants in the street, and they only have a one-inch or two-inch line feeding a four- or six-inch fire hose, they don't have the flow to put the fire out. And I believe that's what one of the problems were at the Paramount Theater, and we're lucky it just burned that down and not the entire block. I believe that was also a problem at the community building, but I don't know that for a fact, but I do know that it was inadequate for the Paramount.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
I saw someone make the move back there. I think, this gentleman, look at you.
I'd like to thank the council for allowing me to come. I am one of the small business people that is in downtown Goldsboro and on Center Street. If you complete the other two blocks, I will be impacted for the whole time. However, I consider that a very small price to pay, to see this project completed. As Chuck Allen knows, initially, I was not so sure about this and expressed this to him. Since then, I've changed my mind, and now I am very proud of this block that you have completed. You're one-third through. I would request that you complete the other two-thirds. The city would look very silly with one block completed and the other two not. So I would request that you complete it. I am willing to put up with any inconveniences to see these next two blocks completed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, just... We got a duo here, could you give...
Oh, no. He's one of my business associates.
Oh, he's a escort.
Thank you, councilpeople, for allowing me to speak to you. This is a new resident. I've only been in the state of North Carolina for three years. I'm also a upstart business. I have a local video production company called Live Wire Production, and I am all for 21st century innovation. I definitely am on board with the guys improving any state of, in conditions of Goldsboro, and I just want to lend my support to this project in any capacity.
Thank you, sir. You too? Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Yes, sir.
Hey, councilmembers. I'm a citizen of Wayne County. I've lived here about 40 years of my life. I have a small business that I run, rental business. I don't live uptown here. I read the article in the newspaper about downtown Goldsboro and how much money y'all have spent on this street. I have tax bills right here from y'all. As a small business, this hurts to write this check at the end of the year. I really hate for my tax dollars to go for this street up here, because I never come up here. I never enjoy this. But I rode down here just to look at this street, to see what was going on. And when I turned that corner and saw that y'all had taken over half the parking spots away, now you only have 26 spots on that side of the street, and I went down there and counted the ones down the street here, and there's 54. So if you expect to bring business into Goldsboro, where are they gonna park? Now you just lost all your parking spots. It makes no sense what they did out here. Also, they lined the street with oak trees. Who in the world lines a street with oak trees that is with concrete and pavement? When Floyd came through here in 99, I lost all my oak trees in my yard. I replanted them. 12 years now, those trees have grown, and the roots have come out of the ground, on top of the ground, and if that had been concrete or asphalt, it would be torn to pieces. Nothing more than a crape myrtle should have been planted out there. I don't understand why they did that. It's just ridiculous. I'm asking the city not to continue with this project. I think it costs the citizens of Wayne County too much, and I don't believe you'll get the traffic up here that people think they're gonna get. I used to work across the street for 17 years, and people just did not come uptown that often. And it was Auto Parts Store and Motor Barons. For 17 years, I worked there across the street, and a lot of people didn't even know who we were, you know? So I just don't think you're gonna get the traffic up here just by improving the streets. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak?
Board members. Streetscape, so-called, is fairly expensive. I am one of the property taxpayers in the city, have properties. I don't know how we would continue to do this project for one block or two blocks without at some point saying, whoops, our fund balance is too low. We need more money. We've had overruns. Most jobs of this nature do have overruns. That's the way it works. I, for one, would hate to see my tax bill continue to go up. It just went up this year. I don't know how we'll continue to pay taxes if they continue to increase. We've talked about fairly large sums of money for a museum. Already spent quite a bit. We got parks underway. I don't know how we will continue to spend the way we're spending, where the money's gonna come from. I don't understand that. I'm also a business person, and I pay a lot of tax, as some of you probably know. And I wonder when the taxpayers of our great city of Goldsboro will be able to say, when is enough enough? When do we stop and look at it and say, let's pay our debts before we make more? I realize we got bonds that will... or debt that will soon decrease, as it indicated in the paper. But I, for one, don't know that now's the time to increase our debt, even if it is going down. We are still in a recession. Those who are maybe retired and have a retirement fund that they draw from probably hasn't noticed the recession like some of us have, especially those who are in business. I used to build 20 houses a year. Now I build one and wait to sell it, and then I build another. So I'm down to three, four a year, max. But my taxes continue to go up. I would certainly recommend that you look at all the projects you have on the board. And anytime somebody says "grant," that's only half the elephant. And then when we have to pay for the other half, we have to continue to feed him. All of it costs money. So anything we do that has continuing expenses will go on for a long time. And that just means that we've got to have more money and more money and more money. I would recommend that you consider our budget, if we've got the money or not, and how we spend it. Thank you.
Thank you for your opinion. Anyone else who'd like to speak? Yes, sir. How are you?
My name is Larry Hill. I'm a fairly new resident to Goldsboro. I moved my mother here about 10 years ago, and I started visiting. Every time I came, I liked the town a little more.
Welcome to Goldsboro.
Thank you. Been here, been here two years now, settled in, and really enjoy it. One of the main reasons I came was the streetscape and the downtown revitalization. I've been involved in construction for the past 30 years, and primarily my workload was downtown revitalization work in old buildings in towns that wanted to turn them around to their heyday. There's no question, in its heyday, Goldsboro was the shining star of Wayne County and beyond. It's a great town, a lot of history here, and it's trying to bring that back. And I think what's happening here is wonderful, and it's going to happen. As I said, my history of construction, I've done this work for 25 years, and aside from the statistics you'll read or see or hear about, I can stand here in front of you and tell you, I've seen the end of this movie. It's got a happy ending. You build a street, the people, they will come. The buildings will fill, taxes will get paid, work will be done, employees will be hired, things will prosper and grow. It trickles down, it does happen. Mr. Williams, you're asking about the water that, Ernie talked about, the engineer. I ran the Central Antares Restaurant, that's one of the buildings I own downtown, and the water is terrible. And we have a lot of filters on those lines to get the sediment and color out. So I'm looking forward to the next couple of blocks that maybe that won't happen. Also, sprinklers because of water. In order for a lot of growth to happen downtown, we want to get people living in these buildings in order to do what you need sprinklers. In order to have a sprinkler, you gotta have water. Not happening right now. So that is deterring the growth. We need to have that happen. And I just think it's a wonderful thing, and it's gonna have a real good end result, I promise you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
I'm here in support of the downtown. My wife and I have been, had a business downtown for 26 years. It was a little inconvenient, it didn't affect my business that much when they did this street. I understand there's been some concern about the parking. I think you're gonna do diagonal parking in the middle and parallel parking on the other side in the next two blocks. We also own our own building, and we own the old Wayne Theater beside it, something that's got variety on it. Now we have a tenant there who's been required to put a sprinkler system in, yet the city can't produce the water for. He's gonna have to spend $15,000 on a sprinkler system, but yet they don't have enough water pressure to push it. Something's got to be done. I can talk about the water too, my folks don't drink the water. As a matter of fact, we had a water heater that went out today. Believe it or not, we had a leak when we came in, we got to look in, it was this much sediment in the bottom of it. All of it comes from the water. It's clogged up our water coolers and everything. I am totally in favor of it, as I've already said, you know, short-term pain, long-term gain. We've been out here long enough to know that business is improving. It's the best that I've ever seen it in downtown, and we've been downtown 26 years. So please, continue and do it as fast as you can. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Can't see any indications, so we'll close our public hearings, and we'll go to presentations. And I do have a few resolutions that I'll read. First resolution. Resolution expression of appreciation for services rendered by Edward H. C. N. Farrell as an employee of the City of Goldsboro for more than 27 years. Whereas Edward H. C. N. Farrell retires on December 21st, 2012, as the chief inspector of the inspections Department of the City of Goldsboro with more than 27 years of service. And whereas Ed began his career on September 25th, 1985, as a housing inspector in the inspections department. And whereas on June 18th, 1986, Ed was promoted to building inspector in the inspections Department. And whereas on July 16th, 1997, Eric was promoted to chief inspector in the inspections Department where he has served until his retirement. And whereas Ed has proven himself to be a dedicated and efficient public servant who has gained the admiration and respect of his fellow workers and the citizens of the City of Goldsboro. And whereas, as the mayor of the City, as the mayor and city council of the City of Goldsboro, are desirous on behalf themselves, the other city officials and employees, and the citizens of the City of Goldsboro, of expressing to Ed H. C. N. Farrell their deep appreciation and gratitude for the service rendered by him to the city over the years. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and city council of the City of Goldsboro, North Carolina, that while we express to Ed H. C. N. Farrell a deep appreciation and gratitude for the dedicated service rendered during his tenure with the City of Goldsboro, we offer Ed our very best wishes for success, happiness, prosperity, and good health in his future endeavors. This resolution shall be incorporated to the official minutes of the City of Goldsboro and shall be in full force and effect from and after this 70th day of December 2012. I don't think Ed is here. It is, is he? If not, I will say this and present it to Ed, and I would just like to say that to Ed C. N. Farrell, I have...
And whereas on July sixteenth, nineteen ninety-seven, Ed was promoted to Chief Inspector in the Inspections Department where he has served until his retirement. And whereas Ed has proven himself to be a dedicated and efficient public servant who has gained the admiration and respect of his fellow workers and the citizens of the City of Goldsboro. And whereas as the mayor of city, as the mayor and city council of the City of Goldsboro are desirous on behalf themselves, the other city officials and employees, and the citizens of the City of Goldsboro, of expressing to Ed H. C. N. Farrell their deep appreciation and gratitude for the service rendered by him to the city over the years. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and city council of the City of Goldsboro, North Carolina, that while we express to Ed H. C. N. Farrell a deep appreciation and gratitude for the dedicated service rendered during his tenure with the City of Goldsboro. We offer Ed our verdest wishes for success, happiness, prosperity, and good health in his future endeavors. This resolution shall be incorporated into the official minutes of the City of Goldsboro and shall be in full force and effect from and after this seventeenth day of December, two thousand twelve. I don't think Ed is here, is he? If not, I will say this and present it to Ed. And I would just like to say that to Ed C. N. Farrell, I personally appreciate the many years that he worked for the city. I was here as an employee when Ed came. So I know his history, I know everything he did, all of the promotions. That's one of the advantages I have as a mayor of this great city. I know its foundation, I know its people. And Ed will lose him a good one. And I'm sure that he will spend the rest of his retired life, if he stays retired long, doing good things. So congratulations, we appreciate it. I move for the adoption of this resolution. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing now all in favor of the motion, ladies and gentlemen, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposing? Motion carried. Ed's retirement resolutions approved. I have one, and I do thank this young man here. War do we ever go back a long ways? We're not gonna tell you how far, but we do have a long ways. Resolution expression of appreciation of service rendered by Kenneth N. Bartlett as an employee of the City of Goldsboro for more than thirty years. Whereas Kenneth N. Bartlett retires on December thirty-first, two thousand twelve, as a Director of Public Works in the Public Works Department of the City of Goldsboro with more than thirty years of service. And whereas Neil began his career on December twenty-seventh, nineteen seventy-eight, as an Athletic Supervisor in the Parks and Recreation Department. And whereas on January fifteenth, nineteen eighty-six, Neil was promoted to Assistant Director of Parks and Recreation Department. And whereas on February twenty-first, nineteen ninety, Neil was promoted to Director of Parks and Recreation Department. And whereas on July first, two thousand seven, Neil was promoted to Director of Public Works Department where he has served until his retirement. And whereas Neil proved himself to be a dedicated and efficient public servant who has gained the admiration and respect of his fellow citizens of the City of Goldsboro. And whereas the mayor and city council of the City of Goldsboro are desirous on behalf of themselves, the other city officials and employees of the citizens of Goldsboro, of expressing to Kenneth N. Bartlett their deep appreciation and gratitude for the service rendered by him to the city over the years. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and city council of the City of Goldsboro, North Carolina, that we first express to Kenneth Neil Bartlett our deep appreciation and gratitude for the dedicated service rendered during his tenure with the City of Goldsboro. We offer Neil our verdest wishes for success, happiness, prosperity, and good health in his future endeavors. Three, this resolution shall be incorporated into official minutes of the City of Goldsboro and shall be in full force and effect from and after this twenty-seventh day of December, two thousand twelve. Again, there's so much I could say about Neil Bartlett. I remember when his young men, when they were kids. And they are now adults who live in wonderful lives, in military, I think, and doing other things. It's remarkable. And I know Neil, I know his heart, and I know his wife too. And I haven't seen her for such a long time, and I see her sitting back there. Thank you too for coming, Jim. We appreciate that. I offer this resolution for adoption.
Second.
Any further discussion or comment?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make one comment to Neil, or I guess, I don't know if the comments are the right way, but I will say this, when Neil, we used to always get a lot of calls. He had a pretty challenge, that was a pretty challenging department, General Services. And we used to get a lot of calls, maybe just a trash can, or this or that. And when Neil, we found out Neil was taking a job, I'm like, wow, would somebody want that job? But I will, the only best compliment I can give Neil is since Neil took over, I have never had a call from General Services, other than my wife, something she thought we should be doing. But, but he, I mean, he has done a wonderful job for us at General Services.
There's one thing, a number of things that I can say about Neil. But Neil is an adult. And when an adult needs to stand up and take the role of an adult, Neil Bartlett will do it. Neil laugh and joke, but he doesn't play. And I appreciate that so much. Neil, if you and the madam would come forward, I'd like to present this to you.
Mayor, while they're coming forward, I could just make some comments too. I will tell you, Neil was the first department head that I met before coming to work for the city. He represents us very, very well. I will tell you, he's been a great ambassador. He has managed the largest and most diverse department. Extremely good at working with people and responding to complaints. And I will tell you, since I've been here, I've had very few complaints about public works that Neil hadn't gotten on and had resolved the next day, and I really do appreciate that. He's dependable. When he said he's gonna take care of something, he takes care of something. I haven't had to second guess him, wonder, and I really do appreciate that. And although he's retiring at the end of this month, it's not goodbye quite yet. Neil has agreed, maybe under duress, I don't, I hope not. But to take a thirty-day break, which is required, and then come back to work until we hire a replacement, which is taking off a lot of stress for me of having to find somebody in a short time period. The bad side for Neil, he has to put one more budget together and a capital improvement plan. So Neil, we thank you for that, and we'll say goodbye for a short time, but we look forward to having you back in a month, or in February.
And Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, and I made quite a few requests to Neil, and he always came through and he resolved it. And I hope that I didn't rush him to a decision to retire.
Yeah, but that's why he's late, oh yeah.
I would simply echo the same thing. The one thing that I can say about Neil, that I've always appreciated his level of professionalism. And when I did bother him, he was very, very good about making sure, giving me a return phone call to make sure things were taken care of. So Neil, I appreciate that greatly, thank you.
You know, his department is probably the most visible. And, you know, you can, I've only been on the board for a short period of time, and I've only worked with Neil during that time. But as a citizen of Goldsboro, I saw the effects of good leadership in, in our public works, and it's a department we can be proud of. And thank you, Neil.
He's not just saying that tonight, he's told me that the first time he came over. We have a long discussion, he knows a lot of his sanitation workers.
Thank you, Neil, for your service. We're surely gonna miss you. And I've always considered you to be a friend. And I've called upon you and your department many times, and you all have never let me down.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Is there anything you'd like to say before?
We'd like to thank all council members for cooperation over the years, and especially these kind words tonight. That's what we're here for, to serve the public, and it's been a pleasure.
Neil, Neil's a great golfer, I don't know if you guys know. We used to play in the awful lot. I haven't played much lately, so now maybe that you're retired, you can ask me to come on?
Give you a call.
Okay, good. We appreciate you, we'll miss you.
Mr. Mayor, there's another gentleman right there.
Mr. Mayor, I never called Neil, I always called him as well. He's in my cup.
We do have another presentation, I think, Karen, are you gonna handle this one?
At least read the, I have the, right here.
Is he here?
Yes, he is.
I'll present it to him.
Yes, he is.
I'd be glad to.
I'll have to wait till I finish with him.
You want him to come up?
In the roast, no.
Why don't we have him come up now?
All right.
Boy, this guy is done. Wow. We go way back too. Very difficult times in the water plant.
You may not know this gentleman because he spends a lot of time at the water treatment plant. He's been there thirty-one years. But you may have seen him out in the distribution system collecting samples, water samples all over the city to make sure the water's safe. But let me tell you a little bit about John, and then the mayor's going to present an award to him. In nineteen eighty-one, after John graduated from Appalachian State University with a biology degree, he came to work as a chemist at the water treatment plant. He's seen many changes in the last thirty-one years there. Most of those have been associated with the new changing regulations and then the new water quality standards. The nineteen fifty-two plant had to now all of a sudden get ramped up and optimized so it can meet those standards. He's also served as a, as a water plant superintendent for a period when we needed one. So he can do anything. There's some exemplary qualities that we see in John. And those are intelligence, innovation, and dedication. His intelligence is demonstrated daily and appreciated by us by evaluating the chemistry data that's being produced every day. And then he translates that data into the minute operation changes at the plant to try to optimize the, the water quality coming from the plant. And as that's become more complex and it becomes more temperamental, I don't even want to go into the, how that is, but it's, it's quite difficult. And so if you haven't seen him out in the distribution system, be assured, he's been out there every week for thirty-one years. John's scientific mind has helped us set up and run many pilot studies at the water plant to explore new ways to treat water to higher standards. Some of the larger piloting projects that he's helped us set up and run is ultrafiltration, nanofiltration, ion exchange, ceramic membranes with ultraviolet light with titanium dioxide catalysts. I mean, the guy's a real brain, but you know, he's helped us do a lot of really complex work and evaluate it.
You don't give us a test when you finish, are you? Yeah, that's big work.
Well, John's always involved when the city's facing problems. And we're not just talking about inside the laboratory. If we have problems out in the system of a whole variety that we've never seen before, or problems that come up during hurricanes and during droughts, John has practical, innovative ways to solve them. And then he goes out there and helps implement those. He doesn't just tell people what to do, he actually does it. He showed a lot of leadership and courage. And some of these situations were quite dangerous, actually. But he did it for the city to make sure we always had water. Throughout the thirty-one years of his service, John has directly touched the lives of every single citizen in Goldsboro daily to make sure they're receiving safe drinking water. We want to thank you, John, and for your loyalty and dedication and to congratulate, congratulate you for receiving the two thousand and twelve Laboratory Analyst of the Year Award from the North Carolina Water Works Operators Association and also from our city council.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Just read citation. NCWOA, North Carolina Water Works Operators Association, proudly presents the two thousand and twelve Laboratory Analyst of the Year to John Hollen in appreciation of your outstanding work as a Laboratory Analyst for the City of Goldsboro and service to the NCWOA. I'm gonna present this to John, and there's no other employee in this city who has gone through what this man's gone through, through the years. There's no more of a standard barrier for his profession in this city than this man. And most of you have never seen him before. But he has been at that water plant, sometime the Lone Ranger. I know this. And he's stayed through it all. And I'm so proud of him, he's a very quiet man, very quiet man. Thank you. I've never given a certificate or award that I enjoy as much as this one. Thank you. Moving right along. Hey, we're getting now to public hearings.
Our first public hearing, item E, has a conditional use request. It's CU-15-12. It's a request by Phoenix T. LLC. It's for property located on the south side of Highway one seventeen south. It's actually on the east side of one seventeen south, between Arrington Bridge Road and South George Street. This is the subject property right here. You have railroad tracks located to the rear, George Street is located to the north. You have Arrington Bridge Road located to the south. The applicant's requesting a conditional use permit to allow the operation of an Internet cafe slash sweepstakes facility. Proposed use is to be located in the former Teasers nightclub, which is located at seventeen sixteen US Highway one seventeen south. The property is zone general business. Here's the subject property shown here, here's one seventeen here. You have some parking located adjacent to the building, as I will show in a minute when I show the photo of the property. Internet cafes are, or sweepstakes facilities are permitted within the general business zoning district, provided they meet all ordinance standards. This particular site is located right here. It does have some residentially zoned property to the rear. So it does not meet our spacing requirement for, from residentially zoned property. So they're requesting a modification of our spacing requirement from residentially zoned property from two hundred feet to a hundred and twenty-five feet. A good portion of this is vacant, but it doesn't meet the spacing requirement. You do have the railroad tracks located in between. The applicant has submitted a floor plan that details a total of sixteen computer terminals shown for this facility, as long as an office area and restrooms. Based upon our parking requirements, I would require a total of thirty-four parking spaces. Based upon the site plan and aerial photo that was submitted, they have approximately twenty parking spaces, so they would need a modification of our parking requirements from thirty-four to twenty parking spaces. NCDOT has reviewed this request and don't have any additional requirements or recommendations. Since the site contains an existing building, they will need the following additional modifications. First modifications involve landscaping. They're asking to modify our street yard and vehicular surface buffer landscaping. As you can see here by the aerial photo, it's all asphalt in the front, including up in the road right away area here. These islands are concrete or asphalt at the end. They're asking to modify that requirement. They're also asking to approve a modification, allow the required street trees to be located elsewhere on the property. They're asking to modify the southern and eastern buffers as well, and asking to modify the sidewalk installation requirement, as well as the fee and lieu requirement. One interesting thing regarding this request is on December fourteenth, the North Carolina Supreme Court upheld a ban on Internet sweepstakes gaming operations. The City of Goldsboro cannot approve such facilities until such time as the law allows these types of facilities to operate again. Essentially, this public hearing was previously scheduled. So we would go, recommend you go forward with the public hearing, and we'll evaluate the, the law and the regulations between now and when it would come back to you in January. Here's an additional picture of the building.
Any questions, Mr. Governor? This is a public hearing, as Sir Randy just described. Anyone who would like to speak? For or against, we'd like to hear from you. Anybody that'd like to speak? Yes, ma'am. If you'd come forward and give us your name and mail and address, we'd appreciate it.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor King and Councilman, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. We are business owners in the one seventeen south area and have been there for many years. I'm not opposed to a business being in the community that doesn't adversely reflect badly on other businesses. However, Internet cafes seem to have a ring of crime that kind of follows them. And because of that fact, and I've gone on the internet and done some research with the governor's commissioner, commission, and there's a number of factors that make my opinion so strong tonight. They did surveys with police departments and sheriff departments throughout sixty-three of the hundred counties. They got surveys back. Crime increased twelve to eighteen percent with the number one crime being robbery and the second crime being theft. We have... We have families that work in our business every day, as well as employees that have become extended families. And we've talked to other businesses that surround this area, and I have letters signed from them tonight that I would like to present to you as well. And I would like to urge you to vote and know when the opportunity comes up against this business for the conditional use permit.
Is that it?
That's it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak on this issue? I don't see any signs. So we will close this public hearing, and we will move on to the next.
Our next public hearing is item F. It's a rezoning request, requested by Woodhaven Enterprises LLC. It's case Z dash thirteen dash twelve. It's for property located on the southeast corner of Wayne Memorial Drive and Gracie Place. This is the subject property shown here in the hatch pattern. This is Wayne Memorial right here. This is Gracie Place located right here. This is the property right here. It's about point five three acres in lot area. They're requesting to rezone the property from R-nine residential to neighborhood business. The current property as stated is R-nine. Property to the west here in the pink color is neighborhood business. The property across Wayne Memorial is also neighborhood business here, and the property directly east is neighborhood business. The property directly south is currently zoned O and I one, office and institutional. Looking at our city's comprehensive land use plan, it shows a slight majority of the property being recommended for commercial development, with the front portion being recommended for existing residential. And that's probably due to a mapping error, probably originally when this was intended, the commercial was going to follow the corridor of Wayne Memorial. This is a pict, aerial photo of the property here. This is Gracie Drive right here and Wayne Memorial, and the existing property contains a single-family dwelling with a commercial-type building located to the rear. There's a couple of the views of the property as well. No actions necessary tonight. After conducting a public hearing, the planning commissioner will bring you a recommendation back as your January seventh meeting.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Again, this is another public hearing, as Mr. Guthrie just described. Anyone like to address it, for or against? If you'd like to hear from us. Any speakers? See, no signs. We will close this public hearing, and we will move to our next.
Our third public hearing, item G, is a public hearing for a unified development ordinance text amendment. It is for, regarding our sidewalk retrofit requirements. The city council has been discussing sidewalk requirements and payment of fee and lieu for sidewalk installation as it relates to retrofitting of existing sites. The staff was instructed to prepare an amendment, which will specifically address instances where an existing use has been intensified or may have ceased operation for more than a year. The existing ordinance requires that sidewalks or payment, requires sidewalks be installed or a payment of a fee and lieu be required when the use of the principal building is intensified or when the property has ceased operation for more than three hundred and sixty-five days. The proposed draft amendment would delete both of these provisions and rewrite the requirements to require sidewalk installation or fee and lieu to be paid in the case of substantial expansion, essentially what tied into construction, substantial construction for existing facilities. And that property would have to be shown on our current long-range transportation plan update as being a road recommended for sidewalk installation to be constructed along that road. So this essentially would relax our sidewalk requirements specifically for non-conforming existing structures. It would essentially not affect our, how it relates to new construction if it was a brand-new site that was developing here in town. No actions necessary tonight. The planning commissioner will have a recommendation at your January seventh meeting.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, in council? Randy? Again, public hearing, as just described. Anyone like to speak, for or against? We'd like to hear from you. Anybody? I don't see any. So we'll close this public hearing, and we will move to our next.
Our next public hearing is item eight. It's a public hearing involving the initiation of zoning for H W B of North Carolina LLC. This is for property located on the southeast corner, southeast corner of Highway seventy. It's Highway seventy here, and this is five eighty-one. The subject property is currently outside the city's jurisdiction limits and is not currently zoned by the city. A watershed protection lay currently exists on the property, which would limit the amount of development from an appurvious surface limit on the property, so we're required by law to carry that classification over. Proposed zoning for the site is shopping center conditional district and the before-mentioned watershed protection overlay. The site contains a total of two point three six acres, and the developers requesting satellite annexation of the property. Essentially, this is the property located here on the corner. The proposed shopping center conditional district is consistent with other zonings. This is the Walmart Shopping Center here, and that has a shopping center connotation, shopping center for the satellite annexation to the south. You do have some general business located across the street for an existing facility. Our city's comprehensive land use plan recommends commercial for the subject property. You have some major retail to the north, some industrial recommendation to the east and to the south. The shopping center conditional district will limit the use of the property to a convenience store slash restaurant that's associated with it. We do have site plans submitted for a Sheets business to be located on this property. No actions necessary tonight. The planning commissioner will have a recommendation for the council's meeting on January seventh, two thousand and thirteen.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Again, public hearing? Yes, sir? Anyone who'd like to speak? We'd be glad to hear from you. Would you give us your name and mail and address?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council and planning commission. My name is Jason Barron. I'm an attorney here on behalf of the applicant in this case. Here with me tonight are Mr. Jamie Gerhart and Tom Anastasi, who are representatives of Sheets, who can answer any questions you have with respect to this proposed use, and also Mr. Dwight Vernelson of Rivers and Associates, who's handling the engineering associated with this project. Briefly, before I get into kind of reiterating a little bit of what Mr. Guthrie touched on, I want to say it's nice to be back home. I grew up in Goldsboro. I've been practicing law in, in the city of Raleigh for the last dozen years, but I went to Eastern Wayne from first grade all through high school, so it's, it's neat to be back. And I don't have a dog in the fight about what was talked about earlier, but it looks really nice outside, guys. Again, it's nice to be back. As Dwight, as Mr. Guthrie touched on, this is a two point three six acre parcel at southeast intersection of five eighty-one and seventy. It's the old Carver Equipment Site. It's been vacant for an extended period of time. We're requesting a shopping center conditional district for the site. We've offered conditions limiting it to a convenience store. That convenience store and, and, and Mr. Gerhart will touch on this a little bit more when he talks about kind of what the Sheets model is. The convenience store has an associated restaurant use with it. It, it's kind of your atypical convenience store site. Actually, the, the convenience store grew out of the restaurant and not the other way around. So if you, if you've been to a Sheets, you're familiar with it. If not, Mr. Gerhart, I educate you guys a little bit better on what Sheets is all about. As Mr. Guthrie touched on, this is a proposal that's consistent with the town's or the city's long-term plans for development of this area, and we hope that when we go through this process, ultimately, it's a zoning request that'll get approved. At this time, I'm going to hand it off to Mr. Jamie Gerhart, who can tell you a little bit more about Sheets.
Thank you, sir. Welcome home. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Jamie Gerhart. I work directly for Sheets Incorporated. We were here a few months ago regarding a site plan on Spence Avenue. This is a slightly different process, but Sheets, the main thing I want to communicate about Sheets is if you haven't been to one, is that we are a family-owned business with over four hundred and thirty stores in six states. We're new, relatively speaking to North Carolina, started in central Pennsylvania, founded by five brothers, who are since now on the, the third generation of Sheets family members who have a variety of roles in the company. A few of the remaining brothers are active day-to-day, and I can truly attest, in my thirteen years with the company, that that family atmosphere is spread down to over now fifteen thousand employees. Again, relatively new in North Carolina, but North Carolina represents the largest, per units, number of stores that we're growing at throughout our six-state operation. We've also announced that a hybrid D.C. commissary is coming to Burlington, North Carolina, to help facilitate all the North Carolina growth. The Sheets family members come down, one every, every week just about, few others monthly to see the stores, approve new sites. I can't tell you, like you said, what makes us a little bit unique is that we consider ourselves, I'm not sure people know what it is, but we consider ourselves a convenience restaurant. And that speaks to some of the convenience store model, as well as a fast casual restaurant that's inside the same building. Instead of going to a C-store and having a Subway make your sandwiches, and then you go get Seattle's best coffee, for example, everything is under the Sheets umbrella. So the Sheets convenience store, the Sheets made to order food items, the Sheets made to order coffee drinks, as well as the Sheets brand of gasoline, all under the Sheets umbrella. And it's something that the family believes strongly in, inasmuch as that we have our own distribution center, we have our own commissary, we haul our own gasoline. It's just kind of that mentality that we're going to figure out how to do it the Sheets' way, if you will. Myself started as a store manager, been with the marketing department, now in the real estate department. Again, kind of reiterates that family atmosphere, that family culture that Sheets has. This particular site is over six thousand square feet, has twenty-seven indoor seats. Again, trying to bridge the gap between a C-store with gasoline and a restaurant, and it's, it's truly a hybrid. The, the average store in North Carolina hired, or hires, or employees, over twenty-seven employees. We, we have three shifts. I'm sorry, we're open twenty-four hours a day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. That's why you see that number of employees maybe higher than your average C-store or even average restaurant in some cases. And, you know, uniquely out of those twenty-seven, surely full, full-time, part-time mixture, but also unique to Sheets that after certain hours and ten years is met, we offer not only full-time benefits, but part-time benefits as well. So I, for any other questions about Sheets, I'd be happy to answer them now or, or later.
Can we be able to keep your gas prices low?
How do we?
I said, are you going to be able to?
Well, you know, the, the model of gas pricing is a half-science and half-gut. It's, it's, it's an art in itself that is literally people, that's all they do for us, is buy gas. Certainly, the model looks to, you don't make as much on gas as you think, and that's why there's a science to it.
That's a nice response, but that's not an answer.
Well, keeping gas prices low is all relative. I mean, to what, to what the pricing is in here is different than the one of pricing is in Raleigh. The pricing in, even as you know, in certain parts of the city is different. So, I mean, we think we always have an aggressive gas price, an aggressive gas retail. Is that low? I, I, you know, I don't know what that, that is. I could tell you that part of our model is to have an aggressive gas retail.
That's the answer you should have started.
It, it, it may not be the cheapest, but it's delivered by the snazziest trucks on the road.
Well, now that, I would agree with it. I would agree with it.
And the cleanest.
Believe it or not, those trucks are cleaned every day, because if we're a convenience store trying to get people to buy food, we better have clean trucks, you know? You know, it's just that, it's a...
I don't want to talk about the gas thing. I don't buy your gas. But I sure use your restaurant. I became familiar with Sheets when you opened the facility, Raleigh-Durham Airport area. I hadn't been in one. I've been hooked on them since then. I spend a lot of time in that area. My son's a Delta pilot, and he goes through and comes, and I just spend a lot of time. I am so impressed with that, with that restaurant. How many do you seat there?
Oh, you know, that one there with, to be honest, that age of store seating was an half...
Which one of the old room?
Well, in North Carolina, you know...
Because it was one of the, the first that I saw.
That's right, that's right. You know, that store number's three ninety-nine. We're up to, we're building store number five eleven. So, I mean, there's, there's over a hundred stores that have opened since then. That store might seat like twenty, because it was almost a afterthought or a requirement of the lease, of the deal there, to have indoor seating. The site that we have proposed at Spence, as well as here, you know, it's, it's the next generation of that store as it refer, as it pertains to the restaurant component of it.
But the, the thing I like most about it, your employees, the customer service.
I appreciate that very much.
I, I am very concerned about that, and I pay a lot of attention to customer service. I don't like to pay people and have them, and beg them to serve me. You know, if I beg them, I don't want to pay them. I don't want to do both.
Sure, sure.
You have great employees and very impressive. That's one of the things that attracted me to Sheets.
I, I appreciate that, and when I hear those things, I, I'm sure to get those back to the district and store managers who I see weekly. So, I will.
Thank you. Does anybody else speak?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I will say one thing, since I have to, but, but one thing, since, you know, we're doing really, really good. We've got a Harris heater coming now. We've got up Sheets coming. That was, we got two more, Panera Bread, Red Lobster, so they said, sure, in real estate for Sheets. Tell all of these people, we need Panera Bread, Red Lobster. Man, we'd be good.
We, we aim to be the Panera Bread of Goldsboro.
I'm gonna buy your gas.
Compete with our barbecue.
No, it's, it's a great addition to Goldsboro. Y'all do a great job. I'll do a great job.
Thanks.
Great operation.
Thank you. Anything else?
Nope, that's all.
We probably eat you enough.
That's okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? Okay. We'll close this public hearing, and I think we have one more.
Related item, item A, I, is a public hearing for the aforementioned property for the actual annexation request. This is a non-contiguous annexation request by H W B of North Carolina LLC. This is a two point three six acre located on the southeast corner of Highway seventy West and Highway five eighty-one. Once again, the subject property here is Highway seventy here, here's five eighty-one. City council, they're meeting on December third, two thousand and twelve, scheduled a public hearing for proposed annexation of this subject property. A public hearing notice was advertised, stating the time, place, and purpose of the meeting. Pursuant to state law, at the public hearing, all persons owning property in their area proposed to be annexed, as well as residents of the city, shall be given opportunity to be heard on this proposed annexation. The council determines proposed annexation meets all the requirements of state law and has the authority to adopt an annexation ordinance. Attached to your agenda packet is a report prepared by the Department of Planning and Community Development in conjunction with other departments concerning the subject annexation area. As indicated in the attached report, this area meets the requirements to annex. I'm asked to conduct the public hearing tonight, but no actions necessary. We'll actually bring this request back at your January seventh meeting, along with the site plan and the zoning, to prove it as a, a package, as we've done with other satellite annexation proposals. So just the public hearing tonight, no actions necessary.
Thanks. Any questions from Randy? This is our final public hearing. Anyone who'd like to speak? As Randy just described, we'd love to hear from you. Any, any speakers, comments? I don't think so, so we'll close this final public hearing. Hard-working planning commission, I've watched them sit out there and pay attention. They got a lot of, you guys got a lot of information here tonight, don't you? So this will be an easy job for you. Thank you so much, in your excuse. And Senator Chen, or Mr. City Manager?
Mayor and council, you have items J through O on the consent agenda. We did remove item M, so it will be items J through O, short of item M.
M?
M, the Stony Creek Park site plan, we took that off the consent. Just M, just that one, I'm sorry, just that one. Stony Creek Park site plan, we'll remove from the consent, and we'll bring that to a future meeting.
Okay.
Move for adoption.
Second. We have a motion, second. Any further discussion? If not, we'll have a roll call vote, please. Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
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 That was quick. I'm requiring individual action, we have none.
No, sir.
City managers report.
Mayor and council, I don't have a report this evening. I would just say Merry Christmas to all of you and our citizens in Goldsboro.
Thank you. This is the city attorney.
The only thing I have, Mr. Mayor, I did wish y'all, y'all a happy new, happy New Year and a Merry Christmas. I may not see you here, pal.
Thank you. Okay. Mayor and city councils report, and you put, I'd just like to mention something that was discussed a little earlier, the award won by the fourth fighter winner, Seymour Johnson today. First, the first, uh, that's kind of presented to an installation like Seymour Johnson First, the person, uh, gets time to present it to an installation like Seymour Johnson. And we had the undersecretary of the Air Force personally come, and their, uh, Air Force Chief of Purchasing for all of the Air Force was here. So it's a big deal, and I was so proud of Colonel Levitt and her staff and what they've done, and I'd like to really congratulate them for a job well done and again proving that Goldsboro is the home of Seymour Johnson Air Force Base, the greatest fighter wing on planet earth. That's my story, and I'm sticking to it, and I've got the undersecretary of the Air Force who said that.
Agreeable.
Getting better. Again, a child of promise. Sherry's not here, but I was asked to attend a production at the Pyramid Theater, and I did yesterday. I was there for three days, I think, Friday, Saturday, two times Saturday, and, and these were all local performers within this area. But the young lady that I went to see especially was Madeline Edwards. I saw her someplace with her aunt, with her grandma, and she reminded me that she had used to sing for me years ago, programs at City Hall, and she was just a little thing with a worship angel. Now she's married in production, and she did all of them, did a fantastic job. And I want to congratulate Madeline, not just Madeline, but all of them, for a great production. I didn't believe all of those performances and the musicians were from our area, so we've got a lot to be thankful for. And other than that, to everyone, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
I have a couple of comments, Mr. Mayor. I would like to commend it just one more time to thank Neil and Ed for their many years of service to the city. Uh, we've lost a big part of our management team tonight. Uh, they're gonna be hard shoes to fill, but if anybody's put their time in, they've put their time in and they deserve it, but, but we will miss them here. Secondly, I just want to commend, um, Mr. Holland, John Holland, again. I haven't come into contact with him much through my career. I've seen him, but really didn't know till tonight how important he was to our, to our city and our water plant, and I can tell you that I feel a whole lot better about my water now, and, and I know that if, um, he can impress you and converse with Karen and win y'all's accolades, that we're in good shape at that water plant.
This young man is well of a kind. I don't know any other employee who would have stayed and did what he did for all of... I remember when he was, well, Karen knows the caliber of this young man. It's just absolutely remarkable.
Well, it does your heart good. We always like to see that.
We have some of the best employees you'll learn to find anywhere. I will say that until somebody proved me differently, and they haven't done it yet.
And then lastly, just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, be safe, and just remember those that are less fortunate and try to help them.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, uh, ma'am, I too would like to echo what has been said concerning Ed and Neil and also John. I wish, uh, Ed and Neil, uh, much happiness and longevity in their retirement. Uh, it is my determination, it has always been my determination, to work for the good and the growth of this entire city of Goldsboro, and I, I do appreciate the confidence that, um, the, my constituents in District Four has placed in meaning. I will continue to work tirelessly for the improvement. I have seen more improvement. I've been on this board seventeen years. I have seen more improvement in the last nine years than I, than I did in the first eight years, and I hope that we will stay the course, let nothing, we should be unwavering to let nothing keep us from making Goldsboro among the tops in cities. Wish everybody a Merry Christmas, prosperous, New Year, safe one, and God bless you.
I'm going to sort of, uh, touch on what you said about a childhood of promise. I went Friday night, and, uh, I was very impressed, and I'm not usually impressed over, uh, music, musical programs at a local theater.
No, I'm not.
But I have to agree with you. Every time someone opened their mouth to sing, you would swear that you were in, at Deepak, where you were at, in Progress Energy, and, cause it was that good. If you hadn't ever seen it, it's got a terrific message. It had terrific actors and terrific singers, and next year, put it on your list. You, you will be blessed if you do. Uh, and the second thing is, uh, like everyone else, drive safely. There's a lot of people on the roads from now through the New Year. Pay attention to the other drivers, drive safe, and have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Uh, yes, I'd like to echo the same, um, Merry Christmas and have a Happy New Year. Uh, be safe, be careful, and remember people whom are less fortunate than you. And if you can, if you see someone that, uh, in your neighborhood, maybe, that does not have the means for, uh, Christmas dinner, share your dinner with them. Uh, that's what we're supposed to do. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Michael, you got it.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, Merry Christmas to the audience, to all of you, best wishes, and happy holidays, and Merry Christmas to my compadres up here, each, each and all of you, to your families and children and grandchildren. Uh, also to our missing council member, Bill Broadway, let's hope his daughter has a speedy recovery. She had some surgery that he wanted to be close by, so let's keep, uh, Bill and his family in our prayers. Also, this past week, I attended the ribbon cutting at Wayne Opportunities for John Chance and that, that group. They were very, very appreciative for the city council's support with the vehicle that they were able to, to get, and, uh, they were a happy bunch, let me tell you. They, that was, that was, we did a good thing there. We did a really good thing. And lastly, uh, just have a simple, what I call, grown-up Christmas wish. All of you know about what happened in Connecticut, and you cannot help but be moved by what you saw, those innocent lives that were taken away too soon, gone too soon. I remember the words of a song. Remember this when you, with your children and your grandchildren, enjoy Christmas through their eyes, not through yours, but see it through their eyes, and take the time to count your blessings, count your blessings that you are here, and remember those families in Connecticut who will suffer the loss of their loved ones. They can't bring them back, but they're in God's hands, and we need to remember that. So family first to each and every one of you. God bless you and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
And Mr. Mayor, I've been asked that all churches have a memorial prayer on the twenty-first of this month for the tragedy there in Connecticut.
I, I watched that, and I'll say it, I shed tears. I do that pretty easily for kids, especially when we're dealing with kids. Five to ten years of age, twenty, killed, proven. We are better than that in this country. What does it take? What does it take to continue to lie the... Uh, I... We deserve this.